We now come to the point of the agenda where we're looking forward to the budget workshop.
Okay, I put the board through all the calendar just to let you know what we are in this process. Come on.
Excuse me, just wait a second.
We did have lunch too, so I don't know whenever you guys are ready to break me back, just let me know.
Okay, after a deep conversation with the superintendent, we'd like for, we'd like to be to kind of establish the parameters and the framework of what we're going to do. And then you have 15 minutes, then noon we'll break for lunch and we'll decide how long about 20 minutes and then we'll come back and get this done. Thank you.
On the timeline, we're still in February, March, what we are setting up meetings, yes, with all the departments. And on there, everything that's in red, or that red is looking colored, it's cabinet meeting, and cabinet task, everything that's in sort of the purple color, that's you guys, towards the board. And then the last one to that deadline that we must take to get the what this, but for today, our only purpose today is to get you all those priorities. That's all we're gonna work on today. We're not gonna talk dollars, programs, I just need to get you all priorities, what we need to move forward as to what you all think is important to move to district to the next level. So you have in front of you some dots. Green is high priority. The pink one is medium priority, and yellow is low priority. So up on those issues are your six strategic priorities that you all came up with. Well, I got it. They're numbered, but they're not really, that's just how they were listed, I just put numbers beside them. And really, they change their year as to what you figured at your priority of last year, it would have been the, what the school said, safety. Because in your budget, you were hiring all those over. So that would have been a high priority for last year. So this year, ladies and gentlemen, where you think we need to be moving, you're gonna take the green dots. Everyone, even when you get two choices as to what's high priority. You can say, well, I think safety, get both my green dots. That's fine. But you get two, two votes for high, we get a low. And once you put the dots up there, we're gonna take a look at the group, at what we figure are high priorities. We will have a discussion. So someone may be close. So that's what we're gonna do today. And after we figure that out, each of you has a marker. Once we get to top three, I need to either write under those what things you think we should be looking at to achieve that goal. We're not gonna coast them out today. It's just give cabinet some ideas of things we need to look at. All right?
Now, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Could you give us some examples of what these priorities are? I mean, I know safe could be security guards, cameras, metal detectors. Could you give us some examples?
Let's say high expectations for student achievement. You can talk about your AIP program, NCHAP program, NCHAP AP program, or NCHAP in your career debt for education. Look on plus, those things you're looking at. Just doing the resources. Probably need to look at federal compliance, the Navy Director, because they're very at risk in our federal programs. What's one about workforce? Number five, performance workforce, that's accelerators. For training, for stipends, for either hard staff schools, or hard staff subjects. Community relations. That's difficult. I don't have a lot of expertise in community relations unless you are creating an increase in your loan family benefits within schools. Or that's also to be social workers. Basically, community and marketing. Maybe I just didn't know for sure about that. Yesterday, we have help at the station. It's not, not being used, mostly because of what I see, because there's not a homework program now that I was helping. Well, I think on that, seeing that we had certain dates, certain days of the week, we had teachers work through either college program, or elementary math, or science. And that was our program, because we didn't get help. So I think that's something we can look at from off some money, but we can look at this. So, once you get the priorities.
And the information on the results.
Is out there. So we do need to take a look at our services, our services.
Well, the reason, excuse me, for asking that is that in my mind, if I'm thinking of, you said we're not identifying programs, but I don't know where that program would be, which... I mean, it's something to sell, we'll sell it sometime.
What do you talk about?
Okay, good.
As far as you think those should fit, and those should not.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. We can get up and do that now, by soon as we're gonna break the pool though, and then once we get to eat, we can talk about it. And staff can vote.
He said that.
Staff can vote.
Say all.
I put all my green dots on the board, they finance.
I go back over that.
The green is high, the pink one is medium, and the yellow one is low. You get two votes for each one, and they could all go on the, same colors can go on one.
Come back to order, please. Okay, Mr. Covington.
As a result of you all, I was taken back, I was on a little bit. The top two priorities, of each one, got five high votes apiece with paper respectful learning environment, and your high performance workforce. So I'm assuming.
You can speak a little louder, the crunch is too loud. That's over my chips.
The two highest priorities are your safer respectful learning environment and your high performance workforce. I was a little taken back by that, that the high expectation for student achievement was number one. Typically, it's always number one, but I can understand with the recent thing going on at schools for security. And I'm sure we all voted for the high performance workforce, and we can concentrate on getting salary increases. So that's assuming that's how that got higher than your student achievement.
No, but that's not fully, but you continue, please.
So, the one after the high expectation, the just good stories of resources with unimperatability. Appreciate that. I'll make sure I am good steward for the resources. Clearly, the last one is positive community relations. Someone thought enough to give him two no votes, and they're the one. So I'm hoping that we are satisfied with what we are with our community relations and partnership, or that there's some tweaks we can do with our financial obligations.
Well, you only gave us two dots. You only gave us two dots.
Okay.
So.
But you got the vote.
They all.
They gave both their low votes to that, so they got seven dots, seven yellow. You didn't add the ones. Just back to every press I'm out, but anyway. So, I got, I go over to the board and write what you all want to see in EG, and once you get it back up, that should be in the markers, go write. But I need to know where you're cleaning, as we need to go with this new budget, to help priorities one, two, three. So any, if you may, there's some ideas you have any of that, so some of them we may pay to review without the financial obligation.
And since they all are priorities, that we'll have to figure out how to manage our resources to, to address priority and all of it.
We will take this, and at the cabinet, when we walk through the department budgets, we will be talking about these priorities. And if anybody have new requests for additional dollars, we'll make sure to hide it with these priorities. But we will bring back to you guys all of this of new requests that we validate. Some of them you want to see those, you know, hide and hide stuff, we're not gonna bring that back to you. But stuff that's really valid, even like the community relations one. If there's a program there that we think we ought to at least try, and it's not a big financial obligation, we'll bring it to you. So when we finalize the budget, you made out some of the new beginning budget that's in priorities on six. But that's the exception that we all have a group. So we will take these priorities, we work with department heads, we have a cabinet, we give you a priority out of this. But what we take for our, ought to be for next year's budget, and you'll bring it back to guys.
And please make that by departments, please.
Well, it'll be, it won't, the department name will be beside.
Okay. Kind of like categories, I guess, however that sits out.
All right, so get it right.
Okay, well, I'll wait till we get the discussion.
I didn't know how long you all are gonna be here, but Europe had Saturday cabinet, and we, I see that food already. And we had soul food, black history fun, and so we have some of those, I don't know if anybody, if you want to come down.
What's on menu?
Uh, fried chicken, mashed potato, black onion cheese, green bean, uh, cornbread. It's actually.
Camera?
Well, if you, I, if you want to go play, or I can point, yes.
Get all the other kids up, get a chair, thank you.
Kids can have a chair, they can.
Not you four probably.
I would have said that if I had to, I would have been able to. Um, trying to watch my.
It's just so helpful. You know, you know, I've never bought a lawyer. We got this new right.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Wow.
This is all more related to Sumner in like nineteen six. But you know, when I, I, I saw a, a Wanda basketball game, and you'd be slicker. And Wanda had two players on the bench, and Warren was.
Very great too.
Warren's green, you can't even bring him down.
I'm special.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the above. The areas is. Subs, 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 the drinking.
Whatever that is.
Basketball.
Well, but Jamie doesn't.
He could definitely be passed out. I didn't. He's got, he's got teeth.
All right, wait. He's magic. Oh, no, it wasn't. I didn't. I was asking her if Mike downstairs did bring some hot and warm dishes. And she said, if they're speaking, so. They have, but he didn't have a pocket. I don't say anything about what she runs through, and she said, maybe this stuff would be. Whatever, yeah.
Yeah, probably not. Why not?
Yeah, yeah. So does he give you the papers to make plain of something?
He put cancer here.
You can keep this back to the right. And when she talked about this, I'm going to repeat. She knocked your other ear. It's not good.
It's not good.
Yeah, it's not good. The staff already won't be sorry about here. We want to turn it down once we. You don't see what that happens. It's got to happen. They know it's got to happen. So it will. It'll be settled, one way or the other. Please proceed, Mr. Covington.
I can say that you all have some very thoughtful.
I can get the.
I have some very thoughtful ideas that I know about the Bible now, where we come from. Some of those, and certainly we know how to do what we're seeing done. Uh, you know, we will be reaching out to you on some of those, but I don't know where we are. But we would take these, and I'm, I'm, uh, put them out, I'll spray these, and I'm out to everybody. But you will have.
We're in good time. Would you like to, to have some explanation? So as you go into your process of, of analysis and cost analysis and all the above, you at least understand what we wrote?
All right. On the security guard issue, do we need more?
I wrote that. Uh, we've had that discussion, and it will continue to be an ongoing discussion. Chief, when we have four positions that have midfield? Okay, so we have four positions of po- of police. We have had the conversation, some of us, and we've had a debate, and we have not come to any resolution that some of us feel that there is a need for, and we know the liability, so we, we'd have to flesh all that out. A, a person right in between that, that, that student and that policeman. So that, that security, we'll call it a security guard, it could be, you know, whatever the, the profession calls that mid-level, not security, not policeman, but person who interacts with the students on a daily basis, who says, in, in an authoritative position, listen, young man, it's time for you to go to class, and I'll go to class with you. And, or, listen, cafeteria worker, uh, this is not the place to resolve that situation. You know, if you, if you want to go home, we'll clock you out and we'll work on it later. Or that, um, that person who has established a relationship with that, that ELL student who doesn't speak English, who sees that he's, he's just not fitting in, or she's just not fitting in, but to keep that student in the school instead of leaving without permission, because then he or she is suspended. So that's what I, that's what I call a security guard. And that is a person who doesn't carry a gun, who may not wear a uniform, who doesn't have the badge, who doesn't translate as the cop. But that hopefully can help some of these flare-ups that occur because they occur. Is that, is that an explanation?
That's exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you.
I have all the districts we came from, we call them security institutions. They, they did have uniforms, but everybody knew they wore, they didn't carry guns, they didn't arrest you. They were there to keep discipline, avoid being arrested.
But with, with respect, we, we have a ongoing conversation about liability. So, so that's, that's a conversation I feel we must have, because there are, there are only so many folks with the credentials as a policeman who have gone through the academy, blah, 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 correct?
Uh, in my opinion, you're supposed to have.
Right. But I believe that there maybe is a, 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 a need for another, and of course, um, cameras and mental checkers that work self-explanatory. One other thing, since I wrote it anyway, SB means social behavioral support.
All right, well, here, I'm gonna write your word. Yo, under the behavior school piece, are we talking like a mental health therapist, a program like, um?
Well, I went back and picked up savers. So we have a level of support. We have a, um, I think, a targeted trauma program that is, is even working more in a specific way to, to target this, not target, identify the student who's having serious challenges. But I had a conversation with Randy Carlstrom, who is Wyandotte County Mental Health, and suggested that there could be another level of support that is, and that is not the correct name, but, but I'll call it clinical social worker, so that in the event student A is, is right there, ready to, please excuse me, commit suicide, then I don't have time to call the parent, get the written report, but that initial intervention is, you have the ability to intervene right then, and then refer. Um, and that, um, we don't have that. We have, we have the support. And, and another issue will be if the state chooses to expand the pilot program statewide. Not that it won't, I, I can't say it will be harder for us to get the grant, but perhaps it will, the, the details have not been worked out, but how much, we got ten social workers this time, right? Eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven. And the, the value of the pilot was what?
Eight hundred grand. It was eight hundred thousand, like eight twenty-three.
And there were five districts who had opportunity to share in that?
Five or six.
Five or six. But the total amount was only about eight million? Okay. So if five or six, let's do the math. If five or six benefited from eight million, five or six school districts, we have two hundred and eighty-six school districts. They're saying only putting thirty-three million into the pro- to the program. Don't know how you do that. So on top of our social workers, that would be another layer, but that we have to consider if that is, not if, since we have gotten feedback that that is, that has been successful, I think, then that's, that's like a gotta-have. Uh, not a wish, a gotta-have. So that's what that SB stood for. What's that red? We can't see from here.
Oh.
What's that red, Jim?
Continue the social workers in school increase if would be beneficial. Add college to your account to the KDC and brief and fair facts. Do you highly or servicing our most at-risk kids building and recruiting lines? And there's an improved eye tracking, two-year post-grad, teach how to use technology, teach your students, et cetera, teacher accountability, oh, evidence-based record.
I did. Oh, okay. You know, I, I don't know if you, if, if, if the school district has to adhere to a design curriculum. Uh, I don't know if, 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 I don't know how frequently the curriculum has to change. And, and, and I don't know what the motivation is to change the curriculum. I, I think, I personally think that we ought to hold to the curriculum that shows that is evidence-based, or to get the kind of results that we're looking for, not have to go around and identify, I mean.
I, I don't know, are, are, are we kind of, are we kind of, uh, uh, mandated to follow some kind of guidelines in terms of curriculum? So we're mandated to follow the state standards? But we are, what you're talking about is, we're actually working on that now. Okay. See something coming soon. Okay.
What is that priority say? I, I, is it, who's saying? High expectation, no, what is the?
High expectation for student chief.
Oh, okay. So this, this is student, my student chief. Can I, can I address what I wrote there?
Yes, ma'am.
Um.
Uh, teach how to use?
Yeah.
Ask the.
What? We're amazed, and, and Mr., and Mr. King will, will attest to this. When Mr. King says, whoa, we're buying textbooks, we go, really? Because we are, um, told all the time that we're, we're using the Chromebooks or the this technology or that technology. On the other hand, we get emails from teachers and, and, and students and parents who say, my kid can break through all the firewalls and do everything but. And they're posting, and they're going into and erasing the kids' homework, and blah, 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 blah. My concern is, number one, we're not going to go back. You know, you couldn't, you couldn't, it'll probably come a time you have to do all online banking, whether you like it or not. Okay. But I'm not sure, and if that, my number three goes over here to number five. Can we teach the teachers how to use the technology? Can we, can we? You got that too, huh? Got that covered?
No.
Can we, can we somehow make those computers a little bit more secure? But also, um, you gotta do more than just tie yourself to this machine here. I mean, here we are, we're, we're using paper and markers. Whoa, that's like nineteen hundred. But, but sometimes there's a need for that, and so that's, that's my, you know, there's a conference in, I want to say Florida, that some districts send their tech teachers, lead teachers to, to, to really get the, the latest, and, and, and one, to, to make the teachers more secure. Secondly, to, in, to, to make these students just like, okay, if this is the tech you're going to use, then you're going to be the best, and you're going to, you know, use J-Store, Mr. Attorney. You're going to use scholarly resources like J-Store, and you're not going to use Bang Bang or whatever. Um, but that, um, they know how to use the technology, and the students actually can maybe improve student achievement. But that I'm not sure, parents are telling us and teachers are telling us, you know, they're just playing. But it can't, it can't happen in two thousand classrooms, but it, it may be happening some days.
So what we, I mean, I can do a quick overview. We met with Apple, because all of our, most of our products are Apple, so we're actually going to, you know, one of our technology ICs, along with Joe Fives. And there is a technology, actually, is it actually, whoops, the, the, the what? The technology plan, there's a technology plan, the district has a technology plan.
Right. It's not required by the state anymore, but we still have it.
We still have it, so we're going back to it to actually implement it. And to make sure that it's current, and then offer PD for, we'll have to do a slow rollout for PD, but that is what we were, it was Tuesday that we met with the individuals, and they're putting together a plan that we will be able to implement. Because I, I agree, our kids should be able to use this one-to-one device, and all the attributes that come with it, and making sure that they are able to learn and not, I always say, we don't want it to be just an electronic worksheet that they're doing. Uh, we want to make sure that the teachers also know how to, how to use the.
And we've got the grant that allowed, um, access, the internet access. So we, 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 we have support, we don't have enough. But we have a little bit of support, because a lot of our folks are not on the web. Thank you, sir. I have another question, I'm sorry. He said, improve ACT scores.
I put that, because after he came in here and said, we scored twenty-eight, everybody in here ought to be upset. Everybody should be fighting mad, because it's something wrong, that we need to do everything we can, whatever sources we can use, we got Gira, they claim that they're working with the kids on this and that, all our middle schoolers, let's use whatever avenue that we can to help get our scores up. Because it's, it's hard, and they graduate, and then the parents are saying, you know, but he scored eleven on his ACT. And they are saying that. And we can sit here and pretend like it's not happening, but they're not, and why did they end up going to a school, getting all loans, then they fuck out, and then they come back, and they're distraught, because they can't, you fuck out all A's in high school. Yes, but you have some areas that you need to work on, and you're going to have to work on these things. Maybe you need a smaller school. And then, you know, when you, they're insulted when you mention, I don't know what they call them now, but when I was in school, it was a reading lab, a writing lab, a math lab, and the schools are trying to get them to go. But they seem offended that you can say this, but they are trying to help them, and keep them in. And they're graduating, but they're not prepared. So whatever we can do to help get their scores up, and their state assessments, ACT, what have you, we can't be satisfied with where we are. Now, it's not to put all the blame on the teacher, it's not all the board, but we have some work to do. Everybody has to take some accountability in that. We are not, and if we can sit here and say we are, then we got some problems.
So my question to you, Mr. King, is, and, and again, you have to help me. I believe the state paid for the ACT this year. I don't know if they're going to figure that into the formula for next year, so, um, let's say they do. When, and we get that at what grade?
Junior year.
Okay. So, but do we not, do you practice ACT in younger years, or do we?
Uh, it's, there was a time where ACT had a product that built, but that's gone away already on its, it wasn't a very long-lived product that they had. So we do prep them for that kind of, we don't do a formal test, live test, test prep, but we show teachers how they can design questions for their normal content that, that would allow the ACT.
And do we do that? At what regularity? All eighth graders, all ninth graders, what grade level do we do?
Um, it's, it's sporadic throughout. We, we try to do it from middle school to high school.
Well, I would amend that point to say, maybe we have to have, we could consider what the cost would be if we were to do it at a more regular rate and not have it sporadic. But I don't, I don't know what level, that's, that's your job, my pay grade, uh, what level, um, and, and, and you do it. But, but if it's there, I mean, ACTs are shock treatments, not like some of the other ones, but still. And if, if our average score is, I will say out loud, I think this is what Ms., not speak for her, what we're suggesting. And again, we've also had that conversation that ACT does not guarantee college success. But it sure shows something. And, um, it, it's something that, we, Midwestern schools require ACT. Eastern schools SAT. But, um, if I'm making a, a ten on ACT.
How did you get there?
I didn't get there, I got there. Shocked my way through the entire test.
And there should be some, and what we are doing is, of course, like, really looking through, what I call grade auditing, because if I'm making, if I'm a student, I make straight A's, there's something wrong if I get two of the SAT or an ACT and I have an eleven. Um, that, there's, the curriculum's not, either the grades were not, you know, we just have to really and truly think about what, what we're doing. And so we are on it, and you're talking about the PACD, I don't know if there's a, not the PACD, you're saying the SAT.
PSAT, no, thank you.
The PSAT or the, I don't know if there's a pre-ACT, but, and so in some states, they will, all eighth graders take the PSAT. And so then that's how you know college readiness, and it'll also tell you which students are AP, who should take an AP class, and then you can also see, okay, well, what do I need to, if math is the lower, what we need to do to insight, or give more, it'll give more insight to the.
Right.
Learn, but we can investigate, we will.
And, and there's a price, we recognize there's a price to that. And there's a, there's, there's a, a labor cost to it as well. And there's a labor cost to it as well.
And also, focus on the teaching and the strategies. Because I can remember at some point, when we were testing in content, students got to work with their people to do it. So they just weren't marketing it, even when it was up. So maybe get there as well, to try to incorporate some strategies, you know, to focus their attention on what they have to do.
Test-taking is an altogether different ballgame. I mean, it's got skill development in itself. And that could be another personnel that's cost. So we recognize their costs. So don't freak out.
If there's a conversation, we can have more conversations. I'll communicate some of which...
Why do you always go there first?
Well, I was like, "You can read this one on the page." Okay, teacher, you're going to be a reading teacher. Get order!
Well, many times, when I turn on the television station, our... The meeting that I'm watching occurred a year ago. And I'll pull out Ms. Jones. Oh, the student of the month was a year ago. So that's why I meant current. The production was current. And then I've always asked them of. But this is be my nineteenth year in the legislature, and I've always said, if I can check out what... Oh, Lake District Third Grade is doing this week, I should be able to do it for USP five hundred. As I'm online.
And I agree.
And if we have the video, why can't we use it to give tips? Maybe I don't know how to do this. Or show me. I mean, is it that hard? To videotape something? This is our new system. Like, people were having trouble with the new system. Can we give some tips? Can you give some reading tips? If you wanna help your child, here are some proven things that do work. You can tell them where to read. Give them the tips, show them. Just simple things. Or you help create a library. Well, my sister, Doc, raised school. She would tell, "Get a milk carton, get a box. This is your library." So when I come to your house to visit, I wanna see your library. And some of the fathers were like, "I don't have a box." Well, this is their library. They started with their own books. People gave them books. He said, "You know, they wouldn't stop to look for these more." And she's just brand new, brave, and this is awesome. Now, where's your library? Because you got a model for them. If all you like is sports, at least you have some sports books. So when daddy sits down, daddy has a book. Maybe you have a family bible. That's for you. You got... They gotta see you read, you got a model for them. And if you wanted to be successful, it does start at home. And all real learning doesn't take place at school. We introduce the ideas, the concepts, but somebody has to be pushing you. So if we could give them some tips and show them, if I don't know, I'm willing to learn.
Yeah, and with our sticks, here's a carrot. Where we went to Argentina last year to see the intern, Ms. Bedderfeer, at, I'll say, well, the engineering firm. The students went to the engineering firm and did a little city planning, or neighborhood planning. That was on there. So the kids could see themselves. And that was... That's the carrot. Old production is the stick, but that's the carrot. So there's some... Sometimes, you remember Ms.... What's wrong? Frown on your face.
This is a resource of financial accountability. Okay, what are real financial audits? I don't know what real means.
Real, real? You don't mean real, real means?
I mean, we get a...
We get a financial auditor. And this is my impression. The auditors come in and say, "You have ten dollars, and I found all ten dollars. And I... All ten dollars were accounted for. You spent one dollar on ten different things." My real is that... And it goes along with the segment. And this has been my... Your newer board members probably don't have as much of a history as the other two who opposed me in asking for these types of questions. But that, when then I questioned you spending seven thousand dollars for donuts, the response was, "It was budgeted." So my question is, if you have a budget... And we've had this conversation that when we... When in August, whatever, we say, "We're publishing this budget." And you have two hundred thousand dollars for business supplies. And when then you have a check ledger that has a hundred thousand dollars for paper clips, and I'm exaggerating, a hundred thousand dollars for paper clips, the response is, "Well, it was budgeted." And so, I'm saying, "Okay." But that's not, in my brain, a good use of whatever that category is, fiscal financial accountability. At your level, remember, we're not micromanaging you. It may appear that way, but it's not. That I think for this person, and my constituents, there needs to be more oversight in management of the budget. And then outcome, kind of based reports. If you are... If you go to a conference, and five of you go, and the grant required it, great. Will you come back? That return on investment, you're always saying that. Are you doing a workshop? How do we know what you went for was useful? Will you come back and share it with your staff? You can write a piece of paper, but it's more like, what you took away, and what... How is it, at end of the day, improved student outcomes?
Well, I'm lying, so I'm lying.
That used to go... The guidelines. You know, to avoid those.
Yes. This is how I thought. I really don't know how we survive so long that day. All my... All my hiring programs. Great staff has worked on it. We got some holes that we need to dig, and I'm federal.
It's not even federal?
Yes. I have one, I have nine, I have six. I have four. They won't give you money for the county. Yet the federal government rolls in on people with fines, deficiencies, you know, hiring. They don't just take the one they looked at and found. They brought the heck all of them. They go back five years, make you repay. Well, you're shocked that outside the house. Back out to a district that was in a similar school with other struggles, and had to like, twenty million dollars.
I think we need to expect oversight. Whoever's supposed to watch you is not watching you. So there's a lot down the food chain. It goes up. And competency goes both ways, in my opinion.
Okay. A little right over here. Our performance workflows, professional development at all levels, trauma-sensitive training. Trauma-sensitive training.
The trauma-sensitive training that we had beginning of the year for the administrators and stuff. When our children face how to understand it, it kind of goes back to the social workers too. More sensitive to the culture and environment our kids live in. And what the baggage that break the school, and how we can help them address it. And all our workforce needs to have that training. Because food service, bus drivers, everyone who has contact with our kids can help them. And if they have the training, right way, they know what to do. They know that kid is suicidal. They can love their kid. And they recommend it to the social worker, contact the principal, whatever. That takes time and training.
Yes. PD, veteran qualified to...
And professional development. Fund going professional development. At the same time, check credentials. We have some people who are in positions, in my opinion, who do not have the credentials to be in that position. And with respect, some people have been promoted because their family or friends. And so, that's what I mean by that. And the CRP is culturally development pedagogy. Somewhat like, it's not so much the trauma, but it's more our students, not only, you know, to say, "Here's a Hispanic or an ALL student." That does not say that how you approach the little person from Mexico may be different than from El Salvador. So that, for me, it goes back to trauma. The trauma of coming from this war zone is different perhaps than... I was born here, but our staff mentioned that they had been doing differently... Here's another thing. We went to Argentina. You visited. And we had a parent kind of education group. What's the name of that? You know what I'm speaking of? It was more like, you... Your curriculum. So it was helping the parents understand school.
And then you transfer from elementary to middle school.
And prepare, yeah. We had our board meeting there. We had their board meeting at Argentina Middle School? Okay.
And it helped the parents to understand transitionally if they're gonna go from grade school to middle school.
And helped the parents say, when Johnny comes home with the assignment, the parent also understood. And these are non-English-speaking parents, many of them, but a lot of them. So we asked, "So your success rate is great. Where else does it take place?" And the answer was, "Another school." And again, it's funny. You know, it was a... Was it a pilot program?
It was a line diagram.
But they almost leave that not only for DLL. Parents need to understand. Elementary is a different world. Middle school is a different... Not everybody can teach elementary. Not everybody can teach middle school or high school. It's... You have to have something either innate, or you've been trained, or a combination. But they need to understand, he or she is no longer in elementary school. This is how middle school works. Because you constantly have to... So it's all so... They don't know why you're here. Well, why not? Because it's in middle school. And the expectation, some of it, they really don't understand. And always, some of you got to deal more with them now than they were in middle school or high school than when they were babies. Well, does he really need a babysitter or something? You better be somebody at that house.
Well, she's gonna have a problem. And that's what we... I was thinking very directly. That's what we learned when we went to Sesame Street. And with all of the factions that were there present.
Right.
Recognize that. It's not just gonna be in elementary, but it's not just limited to the schools. It's gonna branch out to other organizations. And so, we're on the road to do that. We just need to...
I'm not sure if we're on the road. It seems like we...
Well, they have sent... They sent you to see.
Right. After looking at it, we in there.
Right, right.
We are on the road. We just need to make it grow, and then keep it...
They just gotta move down the road, because the road's too really long. But that's why... That's why I'm... Yeah. Well, I'm not questioning whether we're... Each of these boards recognize and represent action. And so, what I think we're doing is just building on action. So we're not suggesting that we're on the wrong path. Now, can we bring you here? "Oh, we're on the wrong road." Change roads, yeah. So I didn't mean that too. And I didn't just... I just use that as an example. Because when it comes to trauma, all of our students are traumatized. Some of our teachers may be traumatized. At the end of the day, teaching public students can traumatize you. So, but for me, that number five and number six, there's not that hard line between them, in my opinion, that we've got to work with the parents and the community to make the kids successful. And I think someone said, "We have twenty-two thousand families who are educated, not only students."
And that's one of the things I learned this week, because I grew up in a era where the parents touch. And I maintain that through my teaching. But as I gradually got toward the end, I'm beginning to see that it changed. And what I've been learning since I've been a part of the board is, we have begun to put in those factions that will help not only teach the kids, but the parents, and then the community. So I'm glad that I'm beginning to see that, so that I can change my mentality of where, what I say cares for. Because they need a lot of help right now, and we're doing it. So I really appreciate what you're saying.
So in that case, I think green is yellow. And yellow is green.
Okay. By the community relations and partnership, greater, irregular, interactive. I guess it's more of an advocacy than a zone. These folks pay the bills, do not ignore them. Remember, community meetings, whatever, of a size, open schools up to the community, example libraries, and our funeral services and memorials. I had that same feeling after the last board meeting I had asked Carol why that library was not open on Saturday. Definitely. We all actively researched, not just that school. It's... I remember like, five or six schools now that the schools, it's just middle, and they don't have a library anywhere yet.
They're... One of the... They're starting to do that now.
And partly that, you may be able to work with... On a library, if they're mobile, library, if there's three of them, might be able to do that in conjunction with them. Have them come to the school. They don't have to access you with more resources than they do in the school library. And some... Something Carol did just now. Now, one summer, we did have several of our elementary school libraries open one to two days a week, encouraging the parents and the families to come to the school to check out books. They don't remember how successful it was, Alan.
I don't know how successful it was.
But that's something else to explore too.
Well, a lot of times, we pick times that's good for us. And it's not always good for the parents and the kids. But if you really say you're here for the parents and the kids, then you gotta make the time available for them. Because that school we just left, that would be the ideal place. Because, I mean, that seemed a hard way for them to get around. I don't know if buses are coming all the way up that hill, and it seemed really dangerous, even though we didn't have as much snow and ice. But we saw three or more kids fall while we were trying to get up the hills. So that would be ideal, if that library was open to them.
Now, quite a few people in Roseville right there, they use Johnson County Library, I feel like, Christ Chopper in the morning. Because we have a... They have a... They make a petrol libraries. So when we built the Chopper Church Library, a lot of people very well said, "Well, we use Johnson County Library anyway, so it doesn't really affect us." But not everyone does that. They... And that was part of the feedback that we did get. But it would be great to have libraries accessible for time for the parents who use them. Our can come to them. Now, we require each side doing a study of the parents that come to their side, because once we're in one school, it's not necessarily good timing for the other school.
And then I put down, because I had received, and Ms. Jones said she had gotten a phone call from Mrs. Ellison, inquiring whether or not she could have her husband's memorial service at summer. And I told her she needed to check with the district. And I told her she needed to check with the district because I know when he had a counselor die at Central, we wanted to do a memorial service for her at Central and use the auditorium and we could tell, no. So, I told her I didn't think that was going to be a possibility. And I don't know if that's a way, that's a way to, to get some revenue. Now, I know it's a whole question, but at least you could. And you may not be able to do every situation. But just another way to.
Thank you. I like that for me, money.
Let's just reframe that, that it is good community relations.
Yes.
In time, in times of crisis and all joking aside, when the young man from Sligo was shot and was a baseball player, the cast kit was, visitation was at the baseball field. I didn't figure out how to say that. So, we're, we're, many times, and, and it goes both ways perhaps with children, with students, children, that the trauma of, of death that you mentioned, you had gone to a couple funerals in two of the same grade, may or may not be the place, the school may not be the place. But we're talking about a former vice principal and former principal of the district. So, it's, I don't know if that policy.
Board policy.
It's a board policy.
Change if you want to change.
What is board policy? Says what, no funerals? No, I'm sorry, I can hear you.
Board policy doesn't permit it, but if you, if you have to board policy, if you want to access your facilities for certain types of events, prescribe what the use would be.
I think the best theory that we can do some research and look at what could be acceptable and applicable for what somebody wants to choose in those groups and then discuss the implications.
We've got a lot of work to do on policies. But you said policy did not permit use of facilities for recognition, memorial services. Is that what you said?
Right.
Okay.
Doesn't mean you can't.
Does it spell that out?
Not specifically that way, but I think it's along those lines. Doesn't mean you can't permit it, it just, the board would have to change the policy. Administration doesn't have to prescribe.
Currently as it stands now, okay. Let me throw one more, and you'll, when I use this as an example, you'll know what I'm saying. Kebel into the lake. Many years ago, our high schools had allowed the use of the swimming pools during the summer for residents. Many years ago, that, because of segregation, such as Wyandotte Swim Club up the street, there were not public facilities, swimming facilities for people of color. So, schools were open in the summertime and that was, that was a way many children of color learn how to swim. Plus, of course, we had swimming classes in, in high school. I would, would question, ask, what would be the cost? Not renovating and bringing up to park all of our swimming pools because I actually don't even know where our swimming pools are.
Washington.
In Wyandotte, somewhere.
But that policy that they can't use.
We've used the pools to some facility groups.
So, it's functioning? Are pools functioning?
No, no.
Well, Washington is, right. And I don't think Washington's quite as, not very.
She's a, she ran it.
Yeah.
Yeah. But Center, I think it's theirs.
Yeah, Center's a small pool. Center doesn't currently function. I know Washington's, I do not know about why, I don't think why that's functioning. I don't think so.
Hey, is there a liability concern?
Yeah, just like any other facility use, but we've, I, we've had them open, I think we partnered with YMCA to have lessons and stuff there.
Parks and Recs.
Parks and Recs used it.
What year did they have the school in, in the summer?
I think that long ago, I don't think.
Well, the irony is everybody's looking at each other looking for answers.
Well, to short answer your questions, there's nothing prohibiting us from using our swimming pools or other facilities for community use or partnership. There's costs associated with the liability issues that need to be addressed either through insurance or through contracts with outside agencies if they want to use those, those facilities. There's nothing prohibiting that happening.
Okay. But right now, the, the cost would be renovating if necessary or seeing if they.
Cost is like having, somebody have a facility open, security, janitor, insurance, which is like, for example, if you go out to Johnson County Schools, they, if you want to rent or use their facility, you have to pay the fee, sign a liability waiver, pay rate insurance as part of that. And if you have to have a lifeguard there to use the pool, pay the lifeguard. It's that kind of a bond or partner with the YMCA out there.
Right. Share that with us.
And I, and I know at one point in time, although this had been a number of years ago, there was a partnership to the lessons from the line in Washington. That's why. So, it's not out of the question, it's just there's a cost base to it. Just like there's a thing else, if you want to use the basketball gym, just wear and tear on the basketball gym if you rent it out and you want to use it, or your tracks or your heels or whatever.
Yeah, that's another conversation.
Yeah, but they're all, it's all, it's all the same bucket of issues is, if you want your facilities to be available to be used by the public or outside groups, you certainly can't do that. You've just got to be aware of what those types of things are, the wear and tear, the upkeep, the editorial services, security.
But for conversation purposes, there are no plumbing issues right now, right?
Yeah.
I'm looking back at the.
Well, all three, all three pools are renovated, ready to go.
Perfect. But the, the, the real reason there, because we don't teach swimming any, anymore in schools, or if we do, do we?
We, we're trying to offer it, there's a few issues. One is, the state of Kansas for licensure only requires general P E, and we don't feel that's enough, so we want to get a teacher who's teaching to be trained in lifeguard safety. The other, the other issue is, P E, this is a numbers game. P E is always the class that takes the big load off the other classes. You can't do that with a swimming class. It's got to be a real small number, maybe 10, 12 kids. And so, that, so suddenly you have this teacher who's usually teaching 30 kids, is now down to a short number. And so, that, that is one of the reasons why it's not a huge program that, that's going. And we've, we've got the pool renovated, there's one school that we don't have anybody who can, who's certified with a lifeguard.
Okay.
Yet, Ms. Ayers at, Senator, Chief Tullis is having a small group.
Swim USA, I know my support, we partnered with them and we do swim clinics. We run a chapter in Missouri, but I'm quite sure they would jump at the opportunity because there's so many, we're in an urban district and there's so many minorities and quite a few have died, especially.
And that's the point, drowning.
Yeah, drowning. And, and they, I know they would jump at the opportunity to come over because they're looking for a partnership and to be able to come in and teach swimming lessons to the kids. And most of them are Olympic swimmers, you know, and they won medals and some almost won, but at least you have somebody who's qualified who can do it.
So, it goes into community relations. But for me, the, the driver is survival, that the kids learn how to swim. And you can, swimmers still drown, but at least you, there, there's maybe prevention there as well as, and, and you know what? We haven't talked about the arts. The arts are, are not funded by the state. They've cut back, but many times the arts are ways to improve student achievement. That Johnny just hates my history class, but he is such a creative person, if he could just get an output, I, you know, he may survive. So, I don't know where the arts would go on there. And they cost too, because I think it says about Mr. King or Ms. Tushman, you couldn't find an art teacher. Well, I get it, but still, it's, it, we've got to be creative and creativity costs.
Exactly.
So, we get that, Mr. Cuffey.
I'm sure you said, we can't pay for everything at the same time.
We can pay for a little bit of everything.
Face everything in.
How you eat an elephant? One bite at a time.
And you better chew.
So, I'm going to take all these and we're going to record them all, we're going to put notes outside, or some of those we're like, Dr. Faust said, we're already doing it. So, it's to make sure that you know what we're already doing for some of those things you all listed. And we can come back with new, I, new item for the budget with the time, you know, things on the board.
There's a challenge.
And that's all I have. Thank you all for being active.
I would just like to acknowledge you for, you know, the, the way you kind of articulate and explain things is really, really enlightening to me. And, and I really appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Back to you, ma'am.
Okay, and this is February, so we, we may need another touch base with you as you have on your calendar in March. Ladies and gentle persons, so we'll, we'll coordinate our calendars later. Next item is, have you had, did you have a chance to review the purchasing procedures? I do know the gentleman who usually is, is in charge had another obligation. Excuse me. So, would you like us to maybe table this issue so we can have a conversation? Okay, do I, Susan, do you need a motion to table item four B?
No, this is just for a first read, so it's actually put on air for you all to see the revise, if you're looking at it, and then when we do have a discussion, we'll already sit in.
Thank you, Ms. Westfall. So, the next item, we're slowly approaching, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience, is the calendar upcoming events. And I know one date is missing in April. We had a, actually, two dates may be missing. A March budget workshop may occur and April workshop with Ms. Barksdale. And don't remember what date we put. I know Ms. Drew has it written down. I think you do. Because Ms. Drew made it for. Huh? Yes, ma'am.
April 6. April 6. What are they talking about?
We will have a, excuse me. An update. I'll call it an update workshop on, excuse me.
On April 6?
Uh-huh.
What time, what time is that?
I thought she said a call.
Update, I'll call it, what should we call it? Executive update? Executive audit update? Is that, does that, do you have, I need titles? Yeah, but what if, executive audit update, April 6, 9 a.m.
We don't have reports given in March.
Dr. Faust and I will try, get together because there may be some movement or lack thereof in school finance that we may have to, I don't know the rest, that we may have to revisit. So, that's code for, we probably need to talk about these priorities again where we have a little closer insight of funding and financing and not wait until April. April, we're actually, well, let's see, do you have that date? What date do we have? Does the state have, does the state have to reply to reports? Kristen, do you know? I want to say March 31st.
Yeah, I want to say it was, I thought it, but they had to respond by April 1st or something.
Yeah, so currently there's no movement. In fact, there is stonewalling. And March is next week.
This is on the case?
This is on school finance, yes. So, if, if the, if the court, if the, if the schools for fair finance had to file their response in March, then we'll know a couple weeks early what, what the decision is. Whatever that means. So, please, Ms. Westfall, add April 6th. Dr. Faust would term and met and Mr. Dutton, if we need to get together in March, it will maybe be, we'll have to communicate with each other so we know folks will be on spring break or vacation in March, so.
Then you'll add anything you want to add.
Well, that's all. This, all the upcoming, just a reminder that we do have our bond updates, so those are opportunities. He was talking about where we get the updates from the bond. So, if you wanted to come to the shop.
So, today is February 23rd, so we have a board meeting on Tuesday. So, don't forget that, ladies and gentlemen. And then we will not meet again perhaps until the 19th of March. We got the spring break. Anything we need to address before we adjourn, ladies and gentlemen? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say that.